I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge. Just want to welcome everyone and thank you for those who are here, present with us in the room. We'll begin with our consent agenda. We have for our consent agenda, the minutes, council minutes for June 7th, HRA January through May, of course, February there were none, joint government meeting, May 31st, planning commission, June 2nd, EDA, June 13th, community center commission, June 13th, and library board, June 14th, along with regular bills. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make the motion to approve their consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Marv.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Lisa, thank you. Are there any comments or questions? All right, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right. On we go. We have a very special thing right now, a proclamation. We have a certain employee, her name happens to be Don Ahmet, and we have a special resolution expressing sincere appreciation, which we'd like to read for everyone, and then of course we'll invite you to come up just to say a word for a moment. I'll read right now.
You need to introduce.
Yes, I need to introduce. Someone needs to introduce this resolution before I go forward, of course. Anyone would like to...
I would introduce the resolution.
All right, Jenny will introduce. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa, thank you very much. And roll call, please.
Nope.
Nope. I gotta read it first, oh yeah, thank you. All right, here we go. "A resolution expressing sincere appreciation to Don Ahmet for honorable and devoted public service to the city of Wyndham, Minnesota, whereas the city of Wyndham wishes to express grateful recognition and appreciation to Don Ahmet for her untiring and valuable service faithfully rendered to the city of Wyndham commencing on December 7th, 1987 through June 25th, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Wyndham, Minnesota as follows: The city council on behalf of its members, city officials, employees of the city of Wyndham, and citizens of this community extends to Don Ahmet its expressions of appreciation for serving the city well, and its best wishes for the years to come. That a copy of this resolution be incorporated in the official records of the city council of the city of Wyndham, and a copy presented to Don Ahmet this 21st day of June, 2022." Roll call, please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Farag.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes. And that resolution passes. Don, can you come up for a second? Just want to shake your hand.
Okay. Okay, all right, thanks. Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone that I've worked with over the years at the library, Joan Hunter, Rosie Davis, and all the high school girls we used to employ during that time. They were a hoot, it made the years go by so fun, so fast, and being a children's librarian was a dream come true for me at the time, and so I got to do that for 27 years, and it was wonderful. So I'd like to thank Joan and Rosie and all the girls. And then for my years of service as a director, I'd like to thank Nancy and Julie. They've helped me a lot. I'd like to thank my board, my library board, through the members of, through the years too with the library board, and how they've been so supportive of the library and everything that it entails to keep it going. The friends of the library, how they have stepped up to help with the furnishings and the windows for the library that happened in 2018, 2019, the entry flooring and everything that they've helped purchase, and of course, to the community when they stepped up and donated monies for the cause to the city council who supported us during that time, which was huge for us to go forward with the window project. Steve and the city council members, I appreciate your support and guidance through the year and years that we've worked together to keep the library going, and the building, a beautiful building to be in, and to the city of Wyndham to own such a wonderful building too. It's really a beautiful building and an asset to the city. I want to thank the general public when they walk in the doors of the library, everyone that I've met through the years, oh, so many. They mean a lot, so, excuse me. So I'd like to wish everyone happy reading and to keep using the library and to supporting the library throughout the years to come, and I wish everyone on staff and our new staff member to, I wish some luck in the future and to keep the library moving, and I know they will, they'll do a great job. The transition will be wonderful and the years for the library will be wonderful too. So just a reminder that I'd like to invite everyone down on Thursday, Friday to the library during regular hours. The friends of the library are hosting refreshments during our working hours of 9:00 to 5:30, so come on in and say hi and bye and see you soon. Another thing I'd like to, I'd just like to say thank you to the city of Wyndham and all the residents of Wyndham and surrounding areas that have supported the library, and every project that we went forward with, so thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
And before we move on, is there any, are there any other council members who'd like to make any comments?
Well, I would just like to thank Don for her many years of service also, and you can tell how a good employee she was by her great retirement speech, so how great is that?
And I'd like to thank Don too, I mean, all the programs, I mean, people think about coming in and checking out books and that kind of stuff at the library, and Don is always the friendly smiling face that people, you know, are greeted by when they come in the library, but also all the programs over the years that she's brought to our community that have been through the library, so that is just awesome. I hope that kind of stuff continues, but thank you very much for all the years that you've brought all those programming to town.
And I'd like to say two things as well. I appreciate two things about you in particular, the way you are so personal and professional at the same time, so thank you very much. All right. Wonderful. Are there any department heads that need to come at this time? All right. We're going to move on to agenda item number four, the 2021 city audit, and we're going to invite Cheryl and Ryan. Would you please introduce yourselves?
Cheryl Alford, Finance Director, and I brought with me Ryan Schmidt from Schleiner-Winter, and they did our audit this year, so he will present our 2021 audit.
All right. Well, I passed out the full audited financial statements, that's the big book in front of each one of you. There's also the report to members of governance, that's some extra required communications as part of the audit, but today we're going to focus on the one that says, "Presentation of the audited financial statements." So I've summarized kind of the high points from the other reports, and we're going to look at that, and if you have any detailed questions after the fact, you can certainly reach out to me at any time. So digging in technically, okay, well, we'll wait for them to get the presentation up on the screen here.
Please bear with us, if you're watching from afar, we're just getting our technology to start working.
Okay, fair enough. Good thing I've got some hard copies, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we flip into the first page, up at the top, it says audit process and opinion. So I always like to start out by just going over a real high-level reminder of what exactly it is we do during an audit and what is the purpose of an audit. So an audit, in a nutshell, is essentially us obtaining your financial records and information from throughout the past year and performing a number of procedures over this information with the purpose of being able to express an opinion on whether or not we feel that your financial statements are accurate. So these procedures consist of things like reviewing invoices and bank statements and confirming information with the state and with the county to verify that all those transactions that are behind the numbers actually have some support and look legitimate. And based on the results of all these procedures this year, we've given you what's called an unmodified opinion, so that's a clean opinion. In other words, we feel that your financial statements are materially accurate. And that's the opinion, that's the best opinion you can achieve, that's what you've gotten in the past. Okay, next page here, so you have that clean opinion, here we're going to talk about some other required communications, so this is where if we encountered any difficulties during the audit, or you know, if we had disagreements of some sort with management, or if we saw unusual accounting policies or transactions, this is where we would let you know about it. But as you can see from looking at the page here, we didn't really run across anything like that. Everything went very smoothly, you know, in fact, considering that it was our first year auditing your city, I would say things went quite smoothly. You know, it's always a bit of a challenge getting to know the city and all the people and how you guys do things, but I think it all went really well. There are a couple items here at the bottom that I always like to point out, a couple estimates in the financial statements that we consider to be significant, and those would be related to the net pension liability and also the OPEB, post-employment benefit liability. These are projections that are determined by actuarial studies, and those numbers can really jump around from year to year, so just something to be aware of. All right, the next page here says internal controls over financial reporting. So as part of the audit, we don't just look at the numbers, we also look at the processes and procedures that are in place behind the numbers. And you know, one of the most common findings that we tend to have with a lot of the cities we work with relates to audit adjustments. And what that means is that during the audit, we oftentimes have to make corrections to year-end balances and help get the numbers cleaned up a little bit, and the nice thing that we encountered here is that we really didn't have to do that. Things were actually very clean, we didn't really have much for audit adjustments whatsoever, so that was refreshing, that was a nice change versus what we see with many of the cities we work at. The next item here talks a little bit about the liquor store. You know, as part of the audit each year, we do a year-end inventory count. We don't count everything, but we stop by the liquor store and we select a number of items from the inventory listing, and we do a count, a physical count, to kind of verify that the items that are listed in the point-of-sale system agree to what we're actually counting on the shelves and in the back. And we had a number of errors that we ran into this past year during that count. And you know, we take these errors, we extrapolate them to the whole population, and we look at, you know, what do we think the overall misstatement is in the inventory population? And it wasn't real significant, you know, it wasn't significant enough for us to have any major concerns, but it was significant enough where we wanted to mention it and say that maybe there's some consideration that could be put forth towards seeing what kind of controls could be put in place, such as mid-year cycle counts of certain products and some sort of review of your inventory listing throughout the year to kind of catch those errors ahead of time. And then the final item that we have here is related to financial statement preparation. This is an extremely common finding. Basically, what this is saying is it's notifying the readers that we as a third party did prepare the financial statements on behalf of the city, and the idea there is that whenever somebody outside of the city is performing that function, then there's a slightly heightened risk that maybe some sort of missing disclosure or error might go undetected in the financials. But I'd say just about every city we work with has that particular item noted. All right, one more slide before we get into the numbers here. As a city in the state of Minnesota, during your audit, the state requires us to look at your compliance with various Minnesota statutes. So they provide us with checklists related to each one of these areas that are noted up on the screen, you know, how do you go about contracting and bidding, and how do you go about approving your claims and disbursements, and where are you keeping your investments, and are there any conflicts of interest, et cetera? So we review all these statutes, we pick specific transactions, and we have one finding this year, which is really more of a clerical type issue. So the state has a statute where they require there to be a policy in place, a written policy, that governs how you go about making electronic fund transfer payments, so making electronic payments. And with that written policy, there's also a requirement that on an annual basis, the city council delegate the authority to a certain city official who has the authority to initiate those EFTs. So that's something that I don't believe has been happening in the past, so we had to make a note of it here. Okay, with that, we'll get into the numbers a little bit here. I'm going to start out looking at the general fund, since this is where the vast majority of the city's general-type activity occurs. So we've got a big picture look here for starters, looking at 2019 through 2021, and then we've also got the 2021 budget on the right-hand side there. So really big picture for starters. Compared to the budget, revenues did exceed budget by about $268,000. Expenditures also exceeded budget by about $188,000. So you had budgeted for an increase in your general fund balance of about $260,000, but your actual increase was about $396,000. So you ended the year at about $4.3 million for a fund balance in your general fund. Now, the next couple slides break this down into a little greater detail. So here we're looking at just the revenues, so these are the same revenues from the previous slide, but now broken out into different categories, and you can see right off the bat, the vast majority of the city's revenues come from intergovernmental sources, so in other words, from other governments. So that's mostly state funding that's coming through. You know, across the board, not much for differences compared to your budget. The biggest difference I see is probably under that intergovernmental category, dropping off a little bit from 2020 compared to 2021, and that's mostly due to COVID grants and airport funding that was received in the prior year that wasn't received in 2021. Aside from that, comparing to the budget, a little bit more from revenues for charges or charges for services for fire calls and airport fuel sales, that's under the charges for services category there, and then on the far right, miscellaneous revenues came in above budget as well. That's items like donations, sales of assets, et cetera. Next page, same exact layout, except looking at the expenditures now. Once again, not much for significant deviations when comparing to the budget, with the exception of maybe the one on the far right, again, capital outlay. So you had a few capital outlay-type purchases this year for a fire truck and then some other equipment that was in excess of what you had budgeted for. Other than that, you can see the vast majority of your expenditures are for public safety, and the slight difference you see there compared to the budget is mostly related to police compensation. Next page, still just talking about that general fund. Here we take a look at that fund balance and we turn it into a ratio, because this is a nice way of kind of benchmarking where your fund balance is at and comparing yourself to maybe cities that are slightly bigger, slightly smaller than yourself. And also, you have a policy in place that's kind of based on this ratio. So you have a policy in place to keep this unrestricted portion of your fund balance equal to approximately 35% to 60% of your annual budgeted operating expenditures. So you can see that you've been on a bit of an upward trend over the past few years, and at the end of 2021, this was, this ratio was at about 80%. So you're in excess of your budget, or in excess of your policy, rather, so looking pretty healthy. And then the next page here, if you just want to know what's happening with your cash balance, then this is the slide for you. So over the past few years, you can see that your cash balance has also been increasing, kind of following the same trend as your fund balance. Okay, so it's enough for the general fund. Now we'll take a look at some of your other governmental funds. So in the financial statements, there's funds that are considered to be major funds, simply because there's just more activity happening there, and then there's funds that have less activity, and those kind of get aggregated and looked at in a more lump sum view, and then there is a breakout of those in the back of the financials. Right here, for the purpose of time, we're just going to focus on your major debt service fund here, and then also your non-major funds in aggregate. So overall, debt service is about what you would expect it to be. You've got revenues coming in here from taxes and assessments, and then your expenditures there of the $695,000 are your bond principal and interest payments. Now you'll also see that other sources uses, that negative $1.3 million on the right-hand side, that's the payment coming out of escrow from the bonds that you issued in 2020. So those refunding bonds, the proceeds went into escrow, and now in 2021, that went out to pay off the old debt, so that's what you're seeing there. So with that, you had a decrease in your fund balance of about $1.5 million for the year, ended your debt service fund at about $865,000. Your non-major funds that are listed there, that consists of your EDA fund, that's probably about half of the activity that you're seeing there, as well as your ambulance and your capital project funds. So revenues from various sources have about $2.4 million there, expenditures also around $2.4 million, and then that other uses, that number that you see there, once again, that's bond refunding payments from escrow, just like in the debt service fund. So overall, decrease in that fund balance of about $2.2 million for the year in aggregate. And the next page just shows the cash trend for both of those categories as well. This is excluding those escrow payments, excluding that piece, just everything else here. So you can see your non-major category at the top dropped off a little bit, down to a balance of about $3.6 million, and debt service actually jumped up a little bit, up to about $1.1 million at the end of the year. Okay, so from there, we're going to move into each one of your enterprise funds, some of the more significant enterprise funds. So the idea here is that these are the funds that sustain themselves based on their charges for services and sales, and operate a little bit more like what you would see a for-profit business operating as. So we've got your wastewater fund for starters here. The graph here is focusing just on operations, and this is what it's going to look like for each one of the enterprise funds that we are going to take a look at here in the following slides. But comparing 2021 to 2020, you can see operating revenues are up about $155,000, and operating expenditures jumped about $765,000. Now, the vast majority of that increase in your operating expenses is non-cash, it's related to depreciation expense. Your wastewater facility project got completed and placed into service, and then on paper it began depreciating with 2021, and that's why you see that big spike in expenses there. That makes up about $542,000 of the increase in expenses. The rest is related to increases in costs for maintenance, utilities, supplies, et cetera. So with that, you had an increase overall in your net position for the year there of $125,000. Next page, same layout, we've got your electric fund. You can see the activity here is pretty comparable to the previous year. Operating revenue is up about $185,000, operating expense is also up about $115,000, so overall operating income here about $1.6 million. So even after factoring in your non-operating items there, which that $200,000 is mostly transfers out to other funds, you still have an increase in your net position for the year of just under $1.5 million. Next page is your telecom fund, also very comparable to the prior year. Revenues increased about $52,000 in your telecom fund, and operating expenses dropped off about $154,000. Now about $100,000 of this decrease related to decrease in subscriber fees that were being paid by the city. With that, you had non-operating expenses there of $166,000, that's mostly interest on your debt, and overall, you had an increase in your net position of about $632,000 for the year. Okay, your liquor fund. So liquor operations, of course, we saw this across the state, they spiked in 2020, and they haven't quite returned to normal yet, so I guess that tells me everybody's still drinking from home, apparently, but this is what we've seen statewide. Revenues did drop off a little bit this year, down about $25,000 compared to the previous year, but still up in comparison to years prior to that. With that, operating expenses increased about $14,000, mostly related to increased costs for employee compensation and benefits. You did have a corresponding decrease in your cost of goods sold, which would be expected with that decrease in revenues. So after that activity, with your $100,000 transfer out to other funds, you still had an increase in your net position of about $29,000. Okay, and I also have the Wyndham Area Health Fund on here. This is essentially the hospital. Due to the close relationship with the city, we need to wrap this into your financial statements. I know they have their own separate audits, so we're not going to spend a whole lot of time here, other than just saying that you can see revenues went up significantly here, significantly here by about $1.3 million due to net patient service revenue increases. Expenses up about $118,000. Factor in some grants that were received throughout 2021, and there was an overall increase in the hospital's net position of about $2.9 million. Okay, now just like with the prior funds, or the previous funds that we took a look at, we have a cash trend analysis here for each one of those categories. So it's kind of working our way from the top to the bottom here. The line at the top is the hospital, once again. Cash here up about $7.2 million to an ending balance of about $22.5 million. The electric fund is in red there, increase there as well of about $2.2 million, up to about $8.2 million for a cash balance at the end of the year. Next one down, the dark blue, that's the wastewater fund, dropped off a little bit, down to a cash balance of about $2.8 million. And then we have the liquor fund in green, which held pretty steady compared to the prior year, ended at about $724,000. And then there's your telecom fund, which actually has a cash balance of zero in the financial statements at the end of the year. That's one that actually has dipped into the electric fund in recent years and has had a cash deficit, but it's been slowly working its way back up, and I say slowly, but actually it made a significant leap back up in 2021. In 2020, the deficit there, the amount being borrowed from electric was $1.2 million, but at the end of 2021, you're up to just a deficit of $300,000, so it's really made some significant increases from operations there. Okay, so that's each of the individual funds that I'm going to talk about today. The next couple slides, we take a look at the city as a whole, wrapping everything together, just really big picture. So here we have a slide for assets, and the next slide will be liabilities. So this is including all long-term items, capital assets, infrastructure, equipment, et cetera, and you can see really your assets have held really steady from 2020 to 2021, current assets being cash and receivables and more short-term items, really not much change there, and also not much change in your infrastructure, so not a whole lot more to... So not a whole lot more to say on that slide. The next slide here, though, we show your liabilities, and you can see that that has dropped off a bit. Your, your current liabilities in the blue, that increased a bit there, that's actually related to the hospital. That's from wrapping that into the city. There's some unearned deferred revenue there related to those grants that I briefly talked about. So that's what's driving that increase in your liabilities right there, is simply deferring some revenues via liability. But then the, the red that you see there, that's the debt. That's the debt of the city, and you can see that that's dropped off a bit from 2020. A good part of that drop-off was due to those bond repayments from escrow that occurred last year. You can see your debt jumped up in 2020 with some of those debt issuances, some of them being refunding bonds, and then the, the refunding payments were made in 2021, making it drop off there. And then I always like to break out that green net pension liability. That's your, your proportionate share of the statewide pension plan, projected liability. There's nothing you can do about this liability, it's basically an on-paper balance that you're required to put on your financial statements. And one final slide with numbers here. This is looking at the long-term debt of the city, broken out between your governmental funds, so the debt that's being financed by taxes and special assessments versus your business-type funds, your enterprise funds, water, sewer, telecom, electric, et cetera. So you can see both of these have dropped off a little bit from the previous year due to those repayments, and just due to your regularly scheduled payments as well. So it ended the year at about twenty-eight million for business type, and about ten point nine for governmental fund debt. Okay, and then I threw one extra slide in here, just as a little bit of a heads-up, which I know Cheryl and I have already talked about this a little bit. This upcoming year for, for 2022, there's a new accounting standard that's going into effect, and it's related to how leases get accounted for and how they get presented in your financial statements. So under the old method of accounting for these leases, there's always just been two types of leases. There's operating leases, where basically you're renting something and you're not actually buying it. And then there's capital leases, where you're taking ownership, and you have to set up the liability, and you have to record an asset, and you're, you're basically making a purchase. Well, under the new method, what they're saying is that even in the event that you're not making a purchase, you're just renting something, it's more accurate to show in the financial statements a projected liability for what the future payments are going to be under that lease agreement. So even on leases where you're just renting something, we're going to have to set up a liability of some sort, and then an offsetting right-to-use asset to offset that liability. So this, this applies whether the city is leasing something to use, or whether the city is leasing it out to somebody else. So it's just an extra element of complication in your financial statements, in my mind, but it, it does provide a little bit more clarity, I suppose, on what your actual future payments are going to be. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
I guess I would just note that this brochure is pretty handy to have followed through. It's pretty clear and explanatory. I would just note that coming out of two years of COVID, where there was a lot of unknown, this looks like a pretty good audit, from what I see. So that's good. Looking at the, the general fund balance, it looks good, but we're going into this bit of inflation increase, so that might not be as good as it looks. So hopefully that we can make a reaction to that, too. It looks like decisions made during COVID came out pretty good, so we can thank the Wyndham's financial staff for that, and so that's good news. And I also like seeing with the electric and wastewater that the income and expense are kind of flatline, even, and there's a gap, so that all looks good. So looks like a good audit.
I agree, I agree.
Anyone else? I did have one quick question for you. As far as the fund balance policy, we have thirty-five to sixty percent, we're at eighty point six, as you mentioned already. How, where does this fit with other cities of like size?
Yeah, you know, your policy is, is pretty well in line with what we see at most cities. I'm thinking there must have been a recommendation, maybe from the League of Minnesota Cities or, or from the state auditor, okay. I figured there must have been, because it's, it can't be coincidence that so many cities have the same policy. But I, I mean, I feel like your fund balance is very healthy, particularly considering that your other funds are healthy as well. You know, we have, we have some cities that we work with that their general fund is very healthy, but then maybe their wastewater fund is deficient and, and, you know, not up to par, or, or they've got some sort of capital improvement fund that has a huge deficit. But we don't really see that here, you know? Your, your general fund is healthy, you're well in excess of your policy, and your other funds seem to be operating in the way that they're intended. So I really don't have any concerns.
Good, and I also am very impressed by the layout. It's very easy to follow for any of the public and for us.
If the auditor said the audit went smoothly, that's probably basic because Cheryl's worked on it, and the department head said, gave her the information, so great job, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd second that for sure, they were, they were great to work with.
All right, very good. Cheryl, do you have anything you need to say? Any further comments or questions for them tonight? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, we need to make a motion to accept the report.
I would make the motion to accept 2021 fiscal audit.
All right, Marv, the motion, and Jim, you second it. We have a first and a second, any other comments? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go on to item number five, the TIF. One dash twenty-two development agreement, and... Jim, take it away.
Okay, I talk pretty loud anyway, and so I, fast and loud, so. Well, it's kind of a pleasure to actually introduce this project. It's been a long time coming, and Drew, my predecessor, started with this project, but I can say, you know, in the four months I've been here, it's changed a few times since even I've been here, so it's, it's, but what a, what a great project for the city, so. And with that, I will just start out, again, it's the TIF one dash two-two with the development agreement with Wyndham Apartments LLC. Since 2021, staff's been working with High Life Foods in Wyndham on the purchase of the EDA-owned spec building located at nineteen twenty-five North Running Avenue for the purpose of constructing workforce housing for their employees. The EDA and High Life entered into an option agreement on December 2021. Since then, High Life has been working with Headwaters Development LLC to coordinate the project, or, I'm sorry, to coordinate the proposed apartment buildings project. Subsequently, the new limited liability corporation known as Wyndham Apartments LLC was formed to purchase the spec building property and to construct new apartment units and manage the property. You see how many times that has changed since it started? It's like, that's four changes. So the EDA also approved the assignment of the option agreement from Headwaters to Wyndham Apartments. The EDA held a public hearing on June thirteenth, 2022. They adopted the resolution approving the sale of the spec building to Wyndham Apartments for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now comes the financing. Some of the main project components include the minimum improvements, such as six buildings, ten units each for a total of sixty units, two parking spots per unit as per city code. There is no underground parking, I get that question a lot, so I just thought I'd throw that on camera. Three hundred and fifty square feet of green space per unit. The property is Zoned R3. The purchase price again was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the, the spec building. The developer is seeking tax increment financing for site improvements and for land acquisition costs. The project does meet the requirements for, to, of a TIF district, including the BUT4 test. The TIF district includes pay-as-you-go, it's not upfront, but it's a pay-as-you-go totaling nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars over a nine-year period. The property must remain market rate for twenty-five years. The city must issue a certificate of completion for the minimum improvements that I mentioned earlier before receiving any TIF payment. Also, developer cannot transfer or reassign the development property or assignment of agreement without the permission of the city. As far as total fiscal impact, again, the total estimated TIF would be nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars over the nine-year period. The total estimated market value was seven hundred, or seven point four million, sorry. And the developer mentioned that they would like to build the first half of the units this year, the second half of the units next year, for a targeted completion date of December 2024. So also, there are a few representatives from Headwaters here to answer questions as well. And with that, staff is recommending the approval of the attached resolution approving public assistance to Wyndham Apartments LLC. With that, I'll take any questions. Or the EDA approval, correct, yes.
Are there any questions from council? Are there any?
Just, Jim, just to make sure that our bond counsel has reviewed this as well as our financial advisors?
Yes, Todd Hagan with Ellers, but our, our bond counsel as well, so, has reviewed it, so.
All right, very good. Are there any council comments or questions for any of the developers who are here with us tonight? All right. We will be needing a, someone to introduce this resolution. Is there anyone? Here's the resolution approving assistance to Wyndham Apartments LLC. Is there anyone who wishes to introduce this?
I would introduce that resolution.
Marv introduces, a second.
I'll second.
Second by Jenny. Any further comments? All right, roll call, please.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Farid.
Yes.
And the resolution passes. Thank you very much. Thank you guys for coming. Yes, thank you all the developers who have come with us tonight from Headwaters. We are very much looking forward to working with you, and thank you for choosing Wyndham. Appreciate that. We will go on to agenda item number six, community center capital project. And we have something to show you. All right, and, all right, thanks, Steve.
In your packet, there is a request from the community center to use some of the reserve capital funds last budget cycle. There were some savings on some roofing work that was done, and some of those dollars were then retained by the community center for equipment replacement. Before he left, Spencer Wizenreid had discussed with the community center commission the need to replace one of the ovens up there. It's reaching the end of its useful life, and we did have a fire call up there for a gas leak on said equipment. And so they are requesting to use up to six thousand dollars for replacement of oven equipment. They have talked to a local vendor and have an order pending, so if you could approve this capital expenditure, they would appreciate it.
Right, so we have this, this need for a new oven over at the community center, is for someone who wishes to make a motion.
I'll make the motion for the purchase of the oven for the community center.
Do we need to include with a maximum of six thousand dollars?
With the maximum of six thousand dollars.
All right, thank you. Lisa made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. We have a first and a second, any further comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to personnel recommendations. First, we'll start with the community center on-call bartenders.
Okay, again, in absence, our community center director. The staff were looking for some on-call help, they do have a couple of folks that have applied for being on-call bartenders, Natalie Burmeister being one, and Karen Fergus is a second. The list, or the memo there shows for on-call, so that's helping turn over the community center, take down tables, set up tables, that kind of thing. The pay is two fifty an hour, and then for the bartender work, it's ten thirty-three, and then there's tips that are collected with that, so that's why that one's a little less. These two people have applied, I've looked at their applications, checked reference, and they were good. And then we also did get one more application that came in today from a Casey Hancock. Community center would like to add her to this list as well. They have a fairly large event coming up, and they'd like to have as many on-call bartenders as they can possibly get, so I would ask that they, or that you add Casey Hancock to this list, should you choose to approve it.
We need to consider whether we'll approve this list of people that are needed for the community center for on-call and bartenders. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make the motion with the addition of the last Casey Hancock also.
All right, thank you, Jim, for making the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jenny. Any further comments?
Yes, I have one. I just think that that's great that we're planning ahead here and trying to get additional staff and have more bartenders and these stuff for events. I've heard in the past some issues with, you know, long lines and those kind of things, and hopefully with some additional staff, we can alleviate some of that wait time and long lines, so excellent, and welcome aboard, new people.
All right, any further comments? That was Jim, and...
Jim was the first.
Yeah, he was the first, Lisa.
Lisa, thank you.
Yep. Any further comments? None? And all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. We'll continue with the library director in lieu of Don Ahmet, being done on the twenty-fifth. So we have, as I understand it, we have come to an agreement here. Who wants to talk about that?
I can, or Jenny, you want to?
Jenny, you want to?
You can go. Okay. As, as memo states, Don, as we witnessed earlier, will be retiring, twenty-fifth of June is his last day. We advertised the position for library director, we had a very strong candidate field, we had eleven applications, as the memo stated. A number of those folks had masters of library science degrees, and a few more than that even had library experience. So the interview team consisted of John Duscher, who is chair of the library board, Steve Fresk from the library board, Jenny Quaid from Personnel, along with council member Grunig from Personnel. We interviewed those candidates, and a recommendation was made to make an offer to Kari Hansen. So that was done on Friday. And so I contacted Kari on Friday, and we discussed some employment terms, and then on Monday, that was finalized, that's been handed out at your spots here. So you can see, she'll be starting at step three on our supervisory scale, with the start date of July eleventh or sooner. She did have a couple of vacations scheduled in July and August, and so that language was incorporated into the, the terms to accommodate that. But we'd certainly welcome Kari aboard, and sorry to see Don go, and, you know, her passion for the library was extremely evident in her ten years library director, and certainly enjoyed working with her. Kari's got large shoes to fill there, but I'm... Kari's got large shoes to fill there, but I'm confident she can step up and and start working that direction with the good staff, so.
We need a motion.
Yep, the motion to hire Kari.
So we need a motion to make this official. Is there someone who wishes to make a motion?
I will make my motion.
Jenny made the motion. Is there a second?
I went second.
Marv seconded. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, and the motion carries. Welcome, Kari Hansen. Even if you're watching, for all those out there, we're very excited about that because that was a lot quicker than I anticipated. So that's that's great. All right, we'll move on to the third one, the Assistant City Administrator/EDA Development Director Job Description. And we need to consider whether we will approve that job description and whether or not we will go for both a split position thing or just keep it to the one. So any thoughts from the council?
Well, I guess the thought was because we haven't been getting applicants for the EDA open position by itself that we needed to make some type of adjustment to generate a little more interest. And because we've seen this particular job description like this in the past, I felt like it was to maybe add Assistant City Administrator to the EDA position. So that was the thought, and Mr. Nasby put together a job description, I guess.
All right, any other comments from council? Any concurrence?
The other ask here is if you wanted to advertise this job as the combined position along with the standalone EDA one and keep those both paths going, or whether you simply wanted to replace this, the other one with this one. That was the other question I had for you this evening, so.
And your recommendation is?
We talked about it a little bit, but Denise and I kind of concurd that we think it would be okay to have both out there, just so that if somebody did say, hey, I'd just really like to concentrate on the EDA, then they could still do that. But it also didn't hurt to have it in maybe two different places. Maybe you see it a couple of different times. It might, oh, hey, I saw that one before it sparks your your thought process. The league doesn't cost us anything to advertise it, so. And then we'll keep the ad in EDOM, which is Economic Development Association of Minnesota. We'll keep that ad going there as well. So that would kind of retain that double path for us, so.
And as I understand it, this was a split position about ten years or so ago?
Correct. We had when we had Bridget Olson was our finance director at that time, and she had done some acting city administrator duties while this position was in transition. And so when we came out of that, we had that combined position of Assistant City Administrator. Our city charter actually has Assistant City Administrator in it. And so when we lost that position with Bridget, I just took it on in my title. So I'm kind of like Dwight Schrute, or I'm my own assistant to to the manager. So so it'd be nice to maybe have somebody fulfill that role. So, you know, there is some additional courage, and I would be happy to have that.
Does the council wish to do anything, make any action there?
I guess I can see advantage and disadvantage both ways. If we combine them and we lose it, we've lost both. We still have Steve, but I guess it really does make a whole lot of difference to me, but the EDA end of it, for
Anyone else?
I had a question as to would there be specific job duties associated with the Assistant City Administrator position? Or is it just kind of your shadow type thing?
As some of the thought of this was succession planning, there would be a quite a bit of that job shadowy type of thing and just, you know, sitting in on maybe some additional meetings where an EDA director normally wouldn't sit in. If you were going into, you know, let's say, some human resource issues, things like that, maybe labor negotiation, this person would be an additional. When Bridget held that title, she would sit in on those meetings as well. So they they're kind of learning that. But then if there's some work that comes out, hey, we have to research this for this particular issue, that person then can take some of those duties and run with them. But as far as standalone independent things, unless it's a research project type of a special project situation, those could be delegated to this person. But generally, the management will kind of mostly stay as is. That answers your question as best I can. And some of it depends on the person's abilities and their interests, you know. So like Bridget's, you know, is finance. So, you know, the the budgets and doing all those things. Now, if we have someone else who has an interest in, you know, like Drew had an interest in the trails, you know, he was EDA director, but trails, the amenities, you know, kind of tied into that, maybe this person, we can have them work on those types of things as well, so, which kind of crosses a couple of different departments.
Is there any interest internally with that?
They're certainly welcome to apply, but there has not been too many folks that want to sit in this chair when I'm not here, so, no. But we'll see, maybe maybe there will be, but right now I'm not seeing anybody at department head jumping off the chair to get into it, so. I'm looking at Scott, he's sitting there. I think he's happy where he's at.
Does the council wish to take any action?
Well, I'd make a motion to advertise both job openings with the corresponding job descriptions.
Okay, we have a motion from Marv to go with both to be advertised. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second from Jim. Any further comments? So we have a motion before us to have both of those job openings done, one standalone and one split position. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, and the motion carries. All right, thank you very much. We're on to new business. Steve, I think you have something there.
Just had one thing. I know Councilmember Quaid has one as well. Under new business, I did hand out a the city employee recognition event. It's going to be held the fifteenth of July, and I'm looking for RSVPs from the council. If you're interested in attending, you can text me or email, and I'll make sure I get you added to the head count. It'll be at the Wyndham Country Club, starting at, I think it's, yep, starting at five o'clock. So you're certainly encouraged and look forward to seeing you there.
All right, very good. Is there any more new business?
Yes, then I have one thing I would just like to bring up for council members to think about, and maybe we talk about at our next meeting once the mayor is back and we're all together, too. In August, every year, we have the National Night to Unite, and that has normally been held not on the actual national night. It's always been on the Monday night, the first Monday in August, because that worked better with the chamber over the years for when they were coordinating with their hot dog, ice cream, social, and businesses being open later. Now the chamber has said, yes, they would like to do it on the actual national night, that the whole rest of the country celebrates it, which is the first Tuesday in August. So the first Tuesday in August then falls on a council meeting night. The event downtown is, you know, about community awareness and and coming together as a community and supporting each other and supporting law enforcement and all the helping professions. And that runs from five to seven. And so I encourage all council members, I know law enforcement is a big part of this event as well. And so I know myself, law enforcement, we will all be down on the square from five to seven for that event. So that would make me, of course, late then to the city council meeting, which starts at six thirty. So I would just like people to think about if we would start the council meeting at seven that first Tuesday in August, so that all of council could attend our community event, which is only just a block away, and then we come down and gather for a meeting at seven. Just something to think about, and we could talk about it next meeting and see where people's thoughts are.
Okay, thank you very much. I have one new business as well. Our council meeting in July falls on July fifth. And I was wondering if the council is okay with that particular date? I know that it's a conflict for me, but that doesn't mean it is for you. We're all good there, all right? Yes.
Councilmember Sherman, we do have a public hearing that evening that was formulated previously scheduled for that Teagle's Park Land Swamp. So that's been advertised, and that's out there for the fifth, so we have to keep the date.
Yes, good point. Thank you, thank you. Very good. Is there any old business? Okay, no old business. We'll go on to council comments, and I think I'll start with Lisa Farag tonight. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I just wished Don Ahmet a very happy retirement and enjoy this new stage of life, and thank you for your service.
Jenny?
Yes, I too. You know, Don has been just wonderful over the years at the library, but I also welcome the change and addition of Kari Hansen. I think people are going to find that same friendly, courteous person to greet you when you walk through the doors of the library. So I hope there'll be a smooth transition there. I know we're going to have interviews soon for the community center director, so hopefully we're going to be getting some of these filled. And I just encourage people, if you know anybody in EDA, financial, community-supporting type of person, send them our way for this EDA position. We really would like to get somebody filled for that as well. Also, just to comment, I've been to a few, we're having, you know, summertime, a lot of communities, small-town communities around have had been having their community celebrations, and I've gotten out to a few of them, just FOLDA last weekend. They had an excellent, I mean, I really was impressed with, they had rides, they had the food, I mean, they really had a lot going on for a small-town FOLDA, very clean, very nice event. I know Jeffers has some events coming up in Stourton, just a lot of different, so, you know, I know we're Wyndham and we support Wyndham, but I like to get out and store our small towns around us as well. So get out and see what other towns have to offer, and if you find good ideas at other places, bring them back to our town, and let's see what we can incorporate here.
All right, thank you. Marv?
I would just mention that, as everybody knows, school's out, and there's lots of little bicycle riders out and about, so pay attention, because they're there, so.
Jim?
Oh, I really have nothing either, other than to congratulate Don on her retirement. She'll find out that it isn't all it's cracked up to be, but it is okay.
Steve?
Nothing this evening, sir.
I just have a couple of things real quick, and of course, I am very proud of the work that Don has done, and I happen to know Kari Hansen as well, and I think your comments are very apt. I also want to mention that I am very pleasantly, well, I shouldn't say it though, okay, I love the transparency of government, and I think that the report today on the audit helps with that sort of thing, is very clear. And thankfully, we have good management, great employees, and things have been going great. Riverfest was a lot of fun. Obviously, I couldn't be there for every event, but I enjoyed much of it, and that's great. I'm glad that Quick Trip is going to be finishing their their ninety-day build or hundred-day build, hundred-day build, and just, you know, not too long from now, just weeks. And I just wanted to remind the council that on the twenty-ninth, we have our city tour. It's coming up pretty quick. And I hope everyone has a terrific week. Thank you so much for joining us. And a meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent.